Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Transportation and Parking Commission of Monday, December 15.
Eric?
Item one, regular business agenda. Item one A, roll call. Commissioner Miravion?
Here.
Commissioner Suleyan?
Here.
Commissioner Weisman?
Here.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Chairperson Sahakian?
Present. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item one B, flag salute. Chairperson Sahakian?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Suleyan to do the honor.
This way, just put your hand on right hand. The right hand on your heart. You have to me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation of God, indivisible, eternal, and just as for all.
Thank you. Well done. Next item, please.
Item two, posting of agenda. The agenda for the Monday, December 15, 2008, special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission was posted by Friday, December 12, 2008, before 5:30 p.m. on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Thank you. Item number three?
Item three, approval of minutes. Item three A, October 27, 2008, regular meeting, approval of minutes.
Commissioners, any comments? No comments, so approved as written. Item number four, please.
Item four, oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision.
I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anybody that would like to speak? If not, I'm gonna open and close the oral communications. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Item five, public hearing. Item five A, Director of Public Works regarding report regarding application for renewal of an owner's permit to operate taxi cab service in the city of Glendale by Bell Cab Company. Five A one, motion to approve the application with findings for an owner's permit to operate taxi cab service in Glendale by San Gabriel Transit, doing business as Bell Cab Company. Five A two, motion to deny the application for an owner's permit to San Gabriel Transit, Incorporated, doing business as Bell Cab Company, and continuing the matter with no further public notice to February 23, 2009.
Thank you. Mr. Bagdanian?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff has, in your packet today, you have five renewal applications. One of them is for a taxi permit renewal, the other four are for non-emergency vehicle application renewals. We have these items that have been prepared, we have reviewed each one of these applications. All these applicants meet the requirements of the municipal code as it relates to vehicle for hire. Operators that are currently tonight being considered is Bell Cab for a taxi permit and four non-emergency medical providers, there is Blue Line Express, Secure Transportation, TransAid and Alpha Trans. These operators are currently permitted to conduct business in Glendale and have requested approval for new owner's permit to operate the same number of vehicles that are currently permitted to do so in the city of Glendale. All applications were thoroughly reviewed and if their permits are approved, they will be subject to the provisions of the vehicle, of the code such as vehicle age requirements, insurance requirements and inspection. So, once they get approved by the commission, they still go to City Clerk's Office, get their inspection, we check their insurance, make sure they comply with all the requirements. Public notice of this hearing was published in the newspaper with sufficient notice as required by the municipal code, and this meeting was publicly noticed as we have all the commission meeting. In addition, letters were sent to all the existing operators regarding this meeting, whether it was for the cab companies, other cab companies, or other non-emergency applications. The first application, item five A, is for application for owner's permit to operate taxi cab service in the city of Glendale by Bell Cab Company. Staff has reviewed this application, they're requesting to continue operating 12 taxi cabs that have been operating in the city of Glendale, and staff is recommending commission approval. The staff report is outlines the experience, type of vehicles they provide, insurance, training, and any violations they may have had over the years, of which they haven't had any, and it meets the public community's necessity requirements of the municipal code, so we're recommending approval of the owner's permit for Bell Cab. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any question on item number five A?
I have some questions.
Yes.
It's not any objection to the applicant, really, it's just more some general questions about the whole taxi cab process. I noted in the municipal code that it specifies that the TPC should review the maximum number of taxi cabs at least once annually. When was last time we did that? And is there any particular reason why there's the number 82 is the limit?
We, at the last time we looked at the taxi cabs operations, we provided a report to Transportation Parking Commission, that I would say about two years ago, that essentially we revisited the number of 83 permits that exist out there. There is not a scientific way of, we calculated that over the number of years we've had cab operators in the city of Glendale, and that has kept, that number has stayed steady. In other words, even though we've had new development in the city, including now that the Americana project has started in May of this year, we've looked at these number of applications and it's based on our experience, based on input we've received from businesses or hotel operators in the city. There's never been a situation where there was a need for additional cabs. Most of these cabs have renewed their permit on an annual basis, the same number of permits that they were allowed to operate, and they've kept those number of permits, they have not increased it or they have not come to us to renew, to add more permits. We have one application now, United Independent Taxi, that will be, has submitted an application for additional cabs. This is a new cab operator in the city of Glendale. We will be bringing that to the commission potentially either January or February. We are actually doing a survey of how many cabs, what's the actual number of trips that are occurring in the city right now by the current operators. Is there truly a demand for additional cab service in Glendale? We will bring that back to the commission in next year, early next year, for you to visit that number of 83. Should we add more? Should we keep it the same? And based on what we have surveyed and how many trips are provided by the existing operators. That would determine whether or not you should raise the cap to allow a new operator essentially to come in, because that has to be based on need and necessity according to the municipal code. Do the existing operators not meet the need of the community for businesses, et cetera? And the new operator has to prove that there is such a demand that is not currently being met by the existing operators, and so therefore we need additional cabs. We will be bringing that issue to the commission before you look at the new operator, because it will require the commission to increase that cap from 83 to whatever number we feel it's appropriate in the city. And then you can consider the application for the new operator. By the same token, we'll also give you an update on the non-emergency because we also have a number of non-emergency applications, new ones, that will be also considered by the commission. We'll give you an idea what the current numbers of applicants are, how many trips they provide, and do we need to add more in the non-emergency. The non-emergency has been a lot easier than the cab, because the non-emergency, each one of these new applicants find a niche market, a small one or two doctors that they serve, and then so they want one permit, and if they're successful, their business starts growing, they come in and add one or two permits a year. Cab companies are different, because they're more regional operators, they operate in different cities, they serve the airports, so we need to give you that kind of a background so that the commission can decide whether or not to raise the cap, and if you do, then you can allow other operators to come in at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, and just to add on that, Mr. Welch, we had the same question in the past to staff, and the indicator for the past commissions has been that if there's no complaints, there's no tardiness, people are not complaining that we're waiting for 20, 25 minutes for a cab to arrive, we have turned down any additional applications. That has been our position, because we are concerned not to flood the city with cab drivers just driving all over the place, traffic as bad as it is. But hopefully this new study will, you know, will come in handy when considering this new application in January.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we've also conducted a survey, we've asked all the existing operators to give us information about the number of trips that they provide, a number of pickups from Glendale. We've also asked the new applicant to provide this information, so we kinda get an idea of what the loads are and see if those are not being met. We will also be surveying some of the major generators in the city, you know, some of the hospitals, Americana, Hilton, to see if they're experiencing any problems with the existing service. And if so, then obviously it can be corrected, as well as you can allow additional cab companies to operate. But we will provide you with that information. We didn't feel that we can do that with these existing operators, because these, their permits expire this year, they have to be renewed so they can continue. New applications are the ones that we would like the commission to have a hard look at them and see if there is a need for them.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I also had a general question regarding the taxi cab application. It mentions in the statement of public convenience and necessity that the recent addition of taxi stands during the past year has enabled taxis to stage themselves throughout the community. Now, I believe there's one such stand on the west side of Brand, just south of the 134 freeway, because I've driven by there and I've seen a number of cabs lined up at that location. Where are the others located? Are there a lot of them, or just a few more?
We have a few. We have one in front of City Hall on Broadway at Isabel. We have two additional ones along Brand on east side, on the west side. The exact block, I don't remember, but we had five locations where we actually surveyed with assistance from the cab operators, is we asked them, where do you really wanna have a taxi stand? They gave us some locations that we didn't think it will meet our requirement, because it would remove on-street parking that was valuable to the businesses. So, we came with a compromised locations, we're monitoring those locations, making sure that they are being used by the taxi cab operators. Some are being used more than others, and the ones that are not being used, we will work with them and we'll advise them, if they're not using this, we're going to take them away and put, whether it's a 30-minute parking or a one-hour parking, back in their location.
The reason I ask is I've had visitors to Glendale come up to me right in the heart of downtown Glendale at Broadway and Brand, and say, "Do you know where I could get a cab around here?" And the answer is really not all that obvious. It's like, "Well, you could try the Americana, or, you know, go up to the Hilton," but that's kind of a, you know, what, someone to have to walk, you know, four or five blocks. And it's easier, of course, if they just have the number to call, but...
The difficulty we had on basically in the 100, 200, 300 block of Brand is that the businesses do not wanna have a cab parked in one of those spaces, because they need it for their customers, and they just, they don't feel good that you have a cab sitting there all the time.
And Glendale is not New York City where you could hail a cab.
Exactly, yeah. So, that's been the issue, but where we could accommodate them, we have them, and we'll try to work with City Clerk's Office to publicize that more.
I do have a couple of questions. The flag drop rate, I've noticed that there are difference for the companies, they range between 245 and 265. Does the city have any say on that?
Mr. Chairman, no, we do not regulate the flag drop rate. We've never regulated it. Obviously, it's a choice we have if we want to. We've left that to the more of the competitive market between cab companies to determine what their flag drop is. In general, they're following what happens in city of Los Angeles, they wanna be consistent with that, because you don't wanna have somebody driving in from Glendale has one rate. We wanna lower rate, for example, for our residents, and then all of a sudden they cross the border, then they have to have a separate rate. So, I believe most of the cab companies are trying to have the same fair structure in the areas that are permitted to operate for the customer's sake, and so we do not regulate it. If it's high, I think it will impact their service, because they will then go with a cheaper flag rates with other operators.
What about any flat rates to any of the airports?
Again, that, there is not a flat rate that we know, but cab companies, if a customer asks for them, they are able to give them a, you know, a number, this is what the rate will be from Glendale to LAX.
Because I know in LA, they do have a flat rate from downtown to LAX.
I know, like Bell Cab represents up here, you know, they can provide some input to the commission, but I believe they know, if you ask them, they'll give you a fairly good indication of what the rate will be for you to go from here to Burbank Airport or to LAX.
Okay. Okay, thank you. If there are no further comments, I think the report was very detailed. Are we ready to vote on it? Can I get it first? Yeah, I'll move five A one. Second?
I move for it.
Okay, we have a first, then a second, roll.
Commissioner Miravion?
Yes.
Commissioner Suleyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Chairperson Sahakian?
Yes.
And just to add, City of LA did allow flagging of taxi cabs throughout the city, which my understanding is, was not very successful. Maybe some of you guys can comment on that, but I read an article about it, that business didn't pick up. I'm not sure if it's the economy or not. Is there a representative that can direct? Yes, please. If you can, please state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Martin Shattuckian, General Manager of San Gabriel Transit Bell Cab. Regarding your question about the flagging down the cabs in Los Angeles, actually, they're calling it Hell Taxi Program, and this is limited in the areas of downtown LA and the mid-part of Hollywood. And official date of starting that program was December 8, and unless we begin, it's kind of a little early to judge, is this program going to be successful or not. My impression is that it is going to be successful, because both public and cab drivers are welcoming it. For years, cab drivers were ticketed and fined for picking up in the red zones, picking up in no-stopping zones, and this and that. Now, they do have a right to stop for a second and drop off the passenger and pick up if it's necessary. So, that will answer your question.
One concern that I would have is, at major venues, Americana being one of them, do you think it will be flooded with taxi cabs just circling the venue, hoping to pick up customers? That would be one concern as far as, you know, myself.
Well, cab drivers are always looking for fares, and after the years of my involvement in cab business in San Gabriel Valley and Los Angeles, I noticed that cab drivers not always, how can I put this together? Your question was if it's gonna be flooded, right?
Well, the concern is if there will be cruising by taxi cabs, and it seems like it's the common thing to do. I mean, you're looking for customers, and you go to New York, every other car is a taxi cabs in the downtown area. And that would be one concern, but at the same time, I have been asked and faced a situation where, like my colleague Commissioner Weisman, people ask me, "Where are the taxi cabs?" You know, and I had told them, "You need to call for one," and the response time shouldn't be more than 10, 15 minutes.
That is correct. Okay, the difference between New York and Los Angeles, Engleand, when it comes to taxi cabs, is significant. When we're talking about Manhattan, New York, it's a taxi town, it's a taxi area, and none of the Manhattan yellow cabs are being dispatched, taxi calls, they're just cruising around and picking up people when they're flagging them down. Situation in L.A., Engleand, is different. These two towns are mostly the cab-order towns, meaning people are calling on the phone and waiting for the taxi. When it comes to Americana, I believe that the one or two taxi stands are being established as we speak, and the cab drivers, cabs actually, will be staged in these areas preliminary. Again, we cannot prevent cab drivers cruising the streets, which are looking for passengers, because they want to make some, they want to make some money. And in these days, when the business is significantly down, 15 to 20%, of course, they will sometime, and we cannot prevent that. Every cab company driver will cruise sometime and look for fares. When it comes to flooding, naturally, for one simple reason, we all know that the gasoline prices are down as we speak, but they're not gonna stay at this level, and they will go back up, and so cab drivers will not waste their money on gasoline and time cruising in the traffic looking for passengers. Professional cab drivers know how to work, know where to stage, and know when to stage, and know where to go and when to go. So, after so many years of being in Glendale, and when it comes to Bell Cab drivers, I know that they're professionals and they know what to do, we will not be flooding the streets. I hope other company drivers will do the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Me?
No.
To Mr. Chairman. Do we have a code that, I think, I do believe they're not allowed to cruise around to begin with, even if...
No, there's no such thing. We don't have any.
They're allowed to cruise?
No. Again, just the nature of businesses, that unless they know there's a destination where they can go pick up cabs, pick up fares, they do not, you know, just the recent gas prices in the $3, $4 range, it just doesn't make sense for them to do so. We also checked with Americana, you know, with their concierge office, and they didn't indicate that there was a lot of cab requests, that it was coming from their customers. Now, as Americana establishes itself, more residents move in, there may be some more, but we specifically, as part of what I was indicating, looking at the different major generators in the city, to see how many cab orders they receive. The information we're getting from the cab operators, it tells us where they're picking up actually, and so we'll provide that information to the commission.
And we haven't had any request to allow flagging of taxi cabs in the city?
No, no.
We haven't, okay. Thank you. If we can, if staff can follow up on the City of LA program?
We'll check in.
Because I've been working the Staples Center lately, my division has been. It has become a problem, to tell you the truth, because it's not just cruising around the venue, it's becoming a parking issue now, because they're pulling curbside and hoping they can stay there for three to five minutes in order to pick up a passenger. So, I'm glad it's not an issue in our city at this time. Next item, please.
Item five, excuse me, item five B, Director of Public Works regarding report regarding application by Blue Line Express, doing business as Southern California Transportation Network, for renewal of an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical vehicle service in the city of Glendale. Five B one, motion to approve the renewal application for an owner's permit to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale by Blue Line Express. Five B two, motion to deny the renewal application for an owner's permit to Blue Line Express to operate one non-emergency medical vehicle in Glendale, and continuing the matter with no further notice to February 23, 2009.
Thank you, and Mr. Bagdanian, I'm assuming that you went over all this, unless, I mean, at this point...
Mr. Chairman, one thing I wanna just to highlight, that this Blue Line Express has been in business in Glendale since 2002.
Okay.
They've been a good operator in the city, they're only requesting to renew one permit for their non-emergency service, and we're recommending that commission approves it.
Okay, thank you. And to my colleagues, we do have all the public works inspectors in the House, so if you have any questions as far as permitting process, any complaints, we can ask them. And maybe you should introduce yourself, please, if you can come to the podium for the new commissioners, that would be great. Just briefly state your name and what you do.
Steve Rodriguez, I'm a licensed investigator for the City Clerk's Office.
Okay, so it's not Board of Public Works, it's the City Clerk's Office, I apologize.
Maria Maldonado, licensed investigator, City Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on item number five B? Thank you. If we can get a vote on this. I'll move five B one.
Second.
Thank you. Roll, please.
Commissioner Miravion?
Second.
Commissioner Suleyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Chairperson Sahakian?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five C, please.
Item five C, Director of Public Works regarding report regarding application by Secure Transportation for renewal of an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical vehicle service in the city of Glendale. Five C one, motion to approve the renewal application for an owner's permit to operate two non-emergency medical vehicles in Glendale by Secure Transportation. Five C two, motion to deny the renewal application for an owner's permit to Secure Transportation, Incorporated, to operate two non-emergency medical vehicles, and continuing the matter with no further notice to February 23, 2009.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Bagdanian?
No, Mr. Chairman, again, Secure Transportation requesting two non-emergency medical service permits, their references are good, and we have no violations recorded from City Clerk's Office recommending staff that they be, but staff is recommending that commission approve it. They've been in operation since 1985 in Glendale.
Thank you. Any comments, commissioners? No questions? Can we move this item, please?
I'll move five C one.
Second?
I second.
Thank you. Roll, please.
Commissioner Miravion?
Yes.
Commissioner Suleyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Chairperson Sahakian?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, five D.
Item five D, Director of Public Works regarding report regarding application by TransAid for renewal of an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical vehicle service in the city of Glendale. Five D one, motion to approve the renewal application for an owner's permit to operate five non-emergency medical vehicles in Glendale by TransAid. Five D two, motion to deny the renewal application for an owner's permit to TransAid, Incorporated, to operate five non-emergency medical vehicles in Glendale, and continuing the matter with no further notice to February 23, 2009.
Thank you. Mr. Bagdanian?
Mr. Chairman, TransAid is requesting renewal for five permits, and they've been in business in Glendale since 1997. There've been no complaints about them, violations, according to the City Clerk's Office, or recommending the commission's approval of the owner's permit for TransAid.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Okay, can we move this item, please? I'll move five D one.
I second.
Thank you. Roll, please.
Commissioner Miravion?
Yes.
Commissioner Suleyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Chairperson Sahakian?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item five E, Director of Public Works regarding report regarding application by Alpha Trans for renewal of an owner's permit to operate non-emergency medical vehicle service in the city of Glendale. Five E one, motion to approve the renewal application for an owner's permit to operate six non-emergency medical vehicles in Glendale by Alpha Trans. Five E two, motion to deny the renewal application for an owner's permit to Alpha Trans to operate six non-emergency medical vehicles in Glendale, and continuing the matter with no further notice to February 23, 2009.
Thank you. Mr. Bagdanian?
Mr. Chairman, Alpha Trans has been a non-emergency operator in Glendale since 1995. They do not have any complaints registered with violations, registered with the City Clerk's Office, and requesting six non-emergency permits to operate, and we're recommending commission's consideration.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Just a brief clarification from staff, and again, this is not in reference to this particular applicant, but one of the findings, and this echoes Commissioner Welch's question about the taxi cabs, is to supply a sufficient number of non-emergency medical vehicles. How does staff determine what a sufficient number is? Is it similar to what you're doing in the... Is it similar to, to what you're doing in the taxi area?
Yes, what we have is a list attached to the staff report that gives you an indication of how many non-emergency vehicles are currently operated.
And there's quite a few of them.
There's quite a few. Again, non-emergency vehicle transportation is somewhat different than taxis. What we have found, and every time we've come to this point where we say, okay, enough is enough, we shouldn't have more non-emergency permits operating in Glendale, because if you can see, there's about a hundred of those, and they, I think, there's enough capacity on these current operators to, to be able to transport the type of patients that they serve. On the other hand, you know, every year, we get applicants with one or requesting one or two vehicles, and the way we've kind of tried to limit, you know, all of a sudden somebody coming in with twenty, thirty application requests, we give them maybe one or two. If they're an established operator that are operating, say, in Pasadena and Burbank, and they have patients, or they have hospitals that they serve, and they have to transport patients in between, we've recommended the commission that we consider those application, applicants for that purpose. There are others that they find a niche with a medical facility, or one doctor, or a couple of doctors, and they're able to serve them, so although, you know, others can serve those, that facility as well, but, you know, doctors don't go out there and look for these type of services, it's just that if it's a, it's a service that they know. It's like shuttles, you know, airport shuttles, if you get used to super shuttle, you call them all the time if you're other types of shuttle. So, the non-emergency is, we've been discussing it many, many times, let's put a cap on it, but every time we do so, we think, if there's a market and they're successful, and some of them, truly most of them have come in with one or two, and then over the years, they've gone up to five or six. On the average, it's about, each operator operates about three to four vehicles, there's some bigger ones in there. So, we've felt the market should determine, you know, if they, if they can survive, good for them, they're providing a service to the city. If they cannot, believe me, there's enough of them that go out of business, or they come in instead of three, three permits, they only renew one, because the business is down. But we'll still give you an update on that at the next commission meeting, before you consider, we'll give you kind of an historical up and down, how many new applications have come in every year, how many stayed, how many, you know, dropped out.
Because it looks like it actually have a few fewer vehicles than last year.
That's right, that's right. That's correct.
Thanks.
And that tells us something, obviously, and, I mean, for all new applicants, my position on this is, I mean, you can, you can see the commission's concern, basically, and there's nothing in writing that caps it, but if you're applying, and hopefully my colleagues will share this with me, try to think of bringing a hybrid fleet, then, then that's a plus point. I haven't seen hybrids taxi cabs in the city. If you want to be considered introducing five, six taxi cabs, you're a new company, then that's a big plus. Coupons for seniors in the city, that's another thing, handicap access, that's another thing. So, you need to be, besides your responsibility of proving that there's need and necessity, you need to be creative and, and come up with, with some new ideas for this commission to look into it, because, believe me, we're not looking into adding any additional traffic to the community, especially the central business district area. Thank you. We still need to vote on this item. Can I get a first?
A second.
We need a first?
Yeah, I'll move 5E1.
Okay, and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miravian?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullian?
Yes.
Commissioner Weissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
And Chairperson Sahakian?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with that, we're to item number six.
Item six, Commission Staff Comments Updates.
Commissioner Sullian?
Just for curiosity, the new meters on brand are, is it going, and any complaints?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullian, that was one of the items that I was going to update the commission on. The new multi-space meters that we installed on brand, they started operation on December 2nd, and to date, everything has been working very well. The signage, you know, we made some adjustments in the signage to make sure that people who are parking on brand are aware of it, starting of first week of November, we put out signs that, to let the public know that the meters are coming, they will be installed, the hours of operations will change. We install them in the on-brand, we put them on barricades, we also install them in surface parking lots, because what the commission approved, and eventually city council approved, was to change the hours from nine a.m., move it up to, to start at six a.m. in the morning, and then extend it till ten p.m. at night, versus six p.m. at night. So, we want to make sure everybody is aware of it. We work with our police department, so that for the first time, whoever violates, they, they're not aware of the meters, or they park in the, you know, in those extended hours that they get a warning notice, they don't get a ticket, so that, but they get recorded, so in case in the future, you get another, you won't get a warning notice, you will actually receive a ticket. City council asked us on the extended hours that we do not issue citations until January 12th, so we give a good forty-five day period, so everybody will know that the meters are in operation, the hours have been changed. In addition, we had parking ambassadors, that, these are employees that we hired through our parking contractor, that from day one, we, we put them in every block, so anybody who approached a pay station, just assist them into, into operation. They're pretty simple to use, but still, you know, for the first time, people, they had any hesitation, they know how to use it, we, we assist them. They will continue through the holidays till January, to make sure that we can help them. From a revenue standpoint, the meters, on the average, have been generating only on brand Boulevard about fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred dollars a day, which is consistent with our projection was. Again, this is with low compliance, because we've been very, very lenient toward enforcing the violations. Interestingly, from our observations, early in the morning, where brand Boulevard used to be full, with employee parking, employees would come in early in the morning, park, you can actually see a lot of those spaces are vacant, in fact, some of the blocks, like in front of Portos, that you would have hardly found the space early in the morning, you can actually pull in from the Portos and find a space to park for fifteen, twenty minutes, pick up pastries, whatever, and then leave. In front of the coffee shops, the same thing. Some of the complaints have been, you know, why do I have to pay if I want to buy a cup of coffee, you know, you can put in a dime and you get six minutes, you know, you can put a quarter, you get fifteen minutes, so you don't have to pay the, put a lot of money into meters. As far as transactions, because it accepts credit cards or debit cards, based on our survey that we've done, almost thirty-five percent of the form of payment is by credit card. The rest of it is all coins. We do not accept dollar bills or any larger bills, anyway. So, most of the people are using change to, to pay, the ones who don't have it, they can use the debit cards, and it's been, the machines, as you, if you recall the details, it also, you can add time via your cellphone. We are working on that feature, I mean, it's, it's being tested, and it's ready, but it's being tested, so that if you parked in a space for an hour, you want to extend the time, you don't have to go to the machine, you can call that number, for the first time you register, and then after that, you can add time to it, to park up to two hours, obviously. It's been very successful, I think we got a lot of good comments from the brand merchants and from the brand merchants association, that they're very happy that those spaces now, they've actually opened up for their customers. What we are doing, however, we're looking at the side streets to make sure that the employees are not moving into residential streets, so we may have to come back to the commission, if the, if there is such an activity, we ask that we implement preferential parking, you know, on the blocks, on the both sides of brand Boulevard, so we can protect the residential parking. We also changed the parking rates in the structure, so all the ninety minute, now, right now, you don't need to get a validation, you can park in all of the city's parking structures ninety minutes for free. That's also been positive, because the merchants who had to deal with a validation stamp every time somebody walked in, whether they bought something or not, they don't need to do that, you automatically get ninety minutes free validation. That's been very positive as well. We're still maintaining the one dollar for four-hour parking for theaters with, that we validate, actually. So, overall, I want to say it's been positive in the short period that it's been in operation, but we're monitoring it, we'll give the commission an update as we go forward with, in terms of whether there are any complaints or make adjustments we can make, or the revenue generation, which is positive, we can spend that money for potentially transit in the downtown, improve our operation.
They allow maximum two hours, they cannot renew after two hours?
They can, we, although the city has a code that does not allow you to park in the same space more than once a day. So, that is, if you park there for two hours and then fill it again another two hours, that's not being enforced right now, but it is enforceable. The issue becomes if people will just continuously feed the meter. However, it will be very expensive, so it's a dollar an hour, so if you continue to do that, maybe for one day, it's okay, but on an ongoing basis, it will be difficult, where you can park in the parking structure ninety minutes for free, and if you park for two hours, you're only paying fifty cents.
Okay. You can get all-day passes too, for the structures?
The, the structures maximum is six dollars, so anything over ninety minutes...
I'm sorry, monthly passes?
Monthly passes, that's right.
You can get monthly passes, which are much easier.
Actually, we, to encourage employees to park in the Orient Street garage, we reduced it, if the commission recalls, to thirty dollars a month, which is almost less than a dollar a day, to park in the, in the parking structures for employees that are part-time, or, you know, financially it's difficult for them to pay sixty dollars at the marketplace or the exchange parking structure.
And before we, we turn the whole city into preferential parking, because my guess is, that's going to happen, it's, it's almost unavoidable in, in some of the sectors. We, I believe I brought up the shuttle idea from the major parking lots to brand Boulevard, maybe that's something that we need to look into before we start pushing the preferential idea?
We, during, when the, when the Americana opened, we, we run a shuttle, parking shuttle, essentially, to all the parking structures. The ride issue was very, very low, we were getting maybe one or two passengers. We have provided that information, given our resources that we have, we didn't have enough buses to run a shuttle during the holidays, but we worked with Galleria and Americana to, to give them the information, so they can operate that for their needs. If, you know, they, they operate a shuttle, they would circulate to the city's parking structures and, you know, pick up people, take them to Americana. Even at the worst time, which was the Thanksgiving, Black Friday, and the, our structure, we still had almost forty percent capacity, and Americana's parking wasn't a problem. The Galleria parking was a problem, I mean, that, that filled up quite...
Well, I know the Galleria for the holiday season, they run shuttles from the zoo parking lot, L.A. Zoo parking lot, to the, to the gallery.
They don't do that anymore this year, because they lost the lease that they had for that period of time, and the zoo, L.A. Zoo wanted to use, have to keep that parking, so they did not allow it. They made other arrangements for their employees to park in, some in city facilities and other private facilities, so they can provide more parking onsite.
Okay. One other question, do these parking meters, the station, have a reset function? If a vehicle pulls in, they drop two dollars, but half an hour later, they leave. Does it reset, or...
Yes, it resets.
So, they do have loops, some type of...
No, no, it doesn't reset, it doesn't recognize when you go, unless you add more time up to the two hours, if you want, when you're paying, you won't know that that meter, that space has already been paid.
You wouldn't know?
You wouldn't know. There is technology that, it's coming into the market, which it will actually detect, it's like an occupancy detector, it will detect and see if that space is occupied or not. It's, it's not reliable yet, and it's quite sophisticated and expensive, so as soon as that becomes available, the machines have the capability for that technology.
Okay.
So, it's not like with a conventional meter, if somebody leaves some time on it, you can't take advantage of it, it's gone.
The one in Pasadena, you, it's not, then it's not the same way as the way Pasadena has, because if you, I do know that, the, the spot that they have, once someone leaves, you still have some time left.
Yeah, it's a...
It's also the same concept that we have here.
Yeah, it's, it's, theirs is a, they have a pan display...
Right.
...system, also, they have a variety of them, they have tested, Pasadena has tested some with that system, where it actually detects the vehicle when it leaves. But we looked into it, and it's very expensive for the function it provides, and we feel, right now, not to confuse things, we, this was the first time we're installing these pay stations, we feel that as technology becomes available, we will go to that, which was good, because then it will really give you occupancy, because you will know how long each space was occupied throughout your normal six a.m. to ten p.m. hour.
Okay.
Yes. Two more, and that's it. Yes. The other thing is, there was an accident this weekend, I believe a fatal accident, if we can have an update on that, is, was it the pedestrian fault, or was it the...
Unfortunately, both of them were, there were two accidents, two pedestrian accidents. I don't have all the details, actually, because the police report does not get generated until a couple of days afterward, so all I can tell you is, there was one at Glendale and Palmer, this occurred in a crosswalk, which also had in roadway warning lights, they were activated, and a truck pulled in in one lane, and the second vehicle and the pedestrians were crossing, and the second vehicle did not pay attention, they didn't stop, so they hit a, a mother and their two children.
I believe that situation involved a teenage driver as well, and the other one, which was a Palmer, Pacific and Lexington.
Lexington, and that one has also involved a, an elderly person and a driver. The actual cause of, cause of the accident is being investigated, so whose fault it was, that would be determined.
I believe that one was fatal.
That was a fatal, unfortunately.
And if you take a look at that intersection, it does not line up at a ninety-degree angle, it's kind of offset, so I'm, I guess we'll wait and see for the accident report if that was any kind of a...
That's correct. Is the web on the city's website, is, when it comes to the number of accidents, are those accurate, or does it get updated? I mean, if I, if I look for 2008, let's say, how many accidents we had, fatal or non-fatal, would, would that be inaccurate?
The information is generated by the police department, we also, you know, we monitor the, the number of accidents, but we don't post them on the website.
Right.
For liability reasons, for other reasons, but we are, you know, we monitor the intersections, we look at intersection where if there's a specific accident pattern, we look at that, and if we determine that there's more left-turn accidents, we look at if the intersection needs left turn error, for example, or the timing is not good. Most of these pedestrian accident, related accidents are very, very difficult to determine unless you have witnesses who see what happens, but in most cases, unfortunately, they're happening in a signalized intersection, in a crosswalk, where you think people will, you know, give the right away either to the pedestrians, or sometimes the pedestrian is unfortunately involved at fault as well.
Since, you just reminded me of something that happened, and it happens quite often, on the off-ramp on the 134 of Glendale and Brand, Brand and Glendale. When you get out, you, there's three lanes, first lane you have to make a right, the second lane, you do also have to make a right, or you can go straight, and the left line is, you have to make a left line. Quite often, I see, and happened just two days ago, the right lanes, the folks just comes in and, and just go straight. Is there any way, the block from Brand and Glendale, or the, Central and Glendale, Central and Brand, sorry, where we can, where the, I believe the Washington Mitchell Building is, can we put either, some kind of sticks where they're not allowed to go forward, or they have to make a right? You see what I mean?
So, if, you're saying if they're in a right turn lane, they must turn right, but they go through?
Yeah, they go through, quite often, and it happened just to me, and there almost been an accident.
This is at Sanchez and at Brand, or at Central?
At Brand.
At Brand.
Heading towards Central.
Heading toward, no, at Central, heading toward Brand.
Right.
So, is the eastbound off-ramp you're talking about?
Exactly, yeah, eastbound. It's very dangerous.
Well, we can certainly look into it and see what the, what we can do to force the right turns to make right.
And they can go, they can go forward.
So, excuse me, if we can go back to that, you have a left turn, you have an optional true right, and you have a right turn only at that location?
Yes.
The right turn only, they're proceeding straight?
That's correct.
That's okay, yes.
And the last thing I'd like to know, the photo enforcement channel?
Yes.
Is it working? How many of them are...
It's working, and I've requested police department that, early next year, to give the commission a, a report on, you know, which intersections, how many violations, of what type of violation... of what type of violations they're citing. It does work very well, specifically at Verdugo and Mountain. Major part of the violations are right turn on red. And especially that corner because we also have a lot of pedestrians crossing and there is quite a few violations, unfortunately, that happens there.
If you stand at that corner for ten to fifteen minutes, do you see the, see it flashing all the time?
Yeah. So it is effective and it's working. We hope people will learn and do not violate the right turn on red because that's the number one of the biggest problems with pedestrian crossings because people are just looking to their left, see if oncoming cars are coming on a, turning right on red and they didn't, they don't look at the pedestrians that are crossing at the same time.
Okay. And we have them for them, I believe, last time you told us?
Four locations.
Four locations. Are we planning to have more in the future?
We are going to evaluate this for a year, once they're in place, and see if other locations are warranted and then we will work with the company to increase them.
All right. Thank you.
I know you want to have them at always stop size, but that's not there yet. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just briefly regarding the, the new meters, I have used them twice on Brand, once with coins and once with credit cards. Both times I was approached by a parking ambassador who offered to help me out and so I think that's been working very well, just from my own experience with that. Also wanted to mention that tomorrow afternoon, the city council and Glendale School Board are having a joint meeting to discuss traffic safety issues, especially in regards to recent accidents. I presume you're probably going to be participating in that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weissman, I actually, this was a cooperative effort. Unfortunately, after that tragic accident that happened, we've been meeting with the school district to look at all the safety around the three schools. We had two basically stakeholders meeting. We met with key parents that are involved in the school, the community, all three schools in the booster clubs or their parents' teacher association. And then we also had a meeting at large in Hoover High School that all the parents were invited to come in and provide us input of the things they see and they could see what we are, have done in the past and what we're planning to do in the future. As a result of that, a meeting is scheduled tomorrow, joint meeting, that was scheduled at a very quick pace so that we can counsel, city council and the uniformed school district board can see what's going on because there are additional improvements that we can make and we need direction to get from both boards. So what I did is I brought, instead of mailing to you, I brought you a copy of the staff report that will be presented tomorrow. If you would, please pass it on. I won't be discussing it here, but we were planning to, as commission had requested, to come back to the commission and update you on school safety around various schools in the city. It's an ongoing project that we're doing, but this is the number one project priority and we have made a bunch of recommendations just to enhance what we have there from the past. We've added crossing, additional crossing guards, we're adding more, we're looking into a raised median on Glenwood, that's a recommendation. We've looked at all the signage around the schools to enhance them, make them bigger, made some more restrictions. Police officers are out there also enforcing the traffic laws. So we believe we've addressed the concerns of the community. Again, unfortunately, that was a, a really horrible accident that happened, again, in a tension between a pedestrian and a, and a driver. But we still think that as an agency, we're, we're trying to do the best we can in terms of what can be done actually in that area. So the staff report basically outlines all what I explained.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm glad we're considering additional crossing guards if, if need be. I know some cities, because, because of their budget situation, they're cutting down, first thing they're cutting unfortunately is, is crossing guard programs. And I know some other cities, they're, they're doing additional enforcement, they, using their meter maids. What they've done is they basically had them trained to be able to write tickets just like a peace officer. And then that's, that's somewhat effective. But I think number one is, is parent education because the same people that are attending all these meetings, they're the ones mostly violating the rules, laws around the schools, unfortunately. So if they behave, I think we can eliminate a lot of these problems, but it's unfortunate. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more item, just a reminder, I know your calendars have been checked. January twenty-sixth meeting, we will have a joint meeting with the Transportation Parking Commission on some of the mobility plan recommendations as it relates to indoor parking fees or transportation demand management. We wanted to get a joint meeting because both commissions deal with parking issues as it relates to projects, to receive commissions, both commissions' input and then, once we have that, they will, then we will present that back to the city council as to what the commission recommendations are for those recommend, those ideas that were in the mobility plan. So January twenty-sixth regular meeting will be, become a joint meeting. We will also be checking with your calendars to see if we can either schedule the taxi meeting in January or it will be in your regular meeting of February, where we will have the, the taxi applications and the non-emergency applications reviewed. Those are the upcoming items. That concludes my comments.
And then you said you had a new application for a new taxi cab company in January, so that will be put off to February in case?
Yes, we will want to present to the commission as it relates to that taxi cap, cap of eighty-three permits that we allow in the city, just kind of give you an overview and provide you with information. We think we have never had this because of the, the cap companies have their own dispatch units that computerized, you can really know how many trips that they make on a daily basis. We will take that information, put it in the form of a report presented to you and then we will consider the new applications at that point.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no.
Just, just one brief one. Given the agenda for the January twenty-sixth meeting, do you have any expectation about when the preferential parking for Burchett Street might come up?
We are going to verify the, I would say, definitely in February.
Okay.
Meeting. We have to verify the, the signatures on the petition. Burchett is a, at Burchett and Pacific, there is a Starbucks there and that, over the years has always created complaints from the residents for preferential parking. Unfortunately, every time a petition has been submitted to us, we verify the petition, then all of a sudden, one or two of the residents back out of the petition so it doesn't meet the requirement. So there's some, been some discrepancy in the petitions. We've tried to do everything we can, but every time it has failed because of a lack of number of signature that's required. So we hope we can deal with it this time and we'll bring that back to the commission.
I just brought it up because a member of the public brought it up at a recent city council meeting.
Yes, I am aware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item seven, adjournments?
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Getting adjourned. Second.
We can't leave until somebody's.